All right, it's five o'clock. I think it's time to start our study session. I'll call the meeting to order. Summer, will you call roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blevins is not in attendance. Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Siri Gusa?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings?
Here.
Commissioner Orr?
Here.
And Mayor Mason?
Here. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern with the record session agenda. Any topics you want to talk about?
I think there was a couple of questions that I'd like to clarify. I know that Commissioner Orr, I wanted Morale to explain the one item on the sewer. I think it was item six point... Six point seven. Would you explain that change order? I think it'd be good, beneficial for everybody to hear why we're doing eight change orders that add up to a whole lot of money.
Yeah, this project was bid in 2010. It is unit price contract. It's a sanitary sewer point repairs. So like whenever we do video inspections, it will identify where the blockages are, where the collapsed pipes are. So we have this program since 90s. It's a very successful program. Every year, previously, we used to bid every year to establish unit prices. So these unit prices include removing the pipe, dig the location of the pipe. So they are identified in very specific, like every six feet, eight feet, 10 feet, manhole. They're identified, established unit prices. So we used to bid that one. Since last four or five years, this contractor said he's going to honor the prices. So like for the city, we are getting a good deal. So I would say, I cannot say no to it. And the law allows to change it. So we didn't, we are, I mean, adding more money to the contract.
Okay, thanks, Morale. I was just curious why, I mean, some of these things are up to like amendment number 11 and amendment number eight and a couple million dollars. I didn't know if that stuff, what the rules were on that stuff being, had to be rebid or, I was just concerned that some of that stuff.
If it is a lump sum project, we have a set amount, like a 5%. That's all we can go over. And these are all unit price bid contracts. So, and there is no limit to that.
Thanks.
Yeah, it is a good news story. Those are 2019 prices. So we hope that contractor keeps on doing that. We'll see. But it does make it look odd in the agenda item when it's up over change order eight and $2 million. How much is the amount for just this year? I know the item says 178. Is that what this year amount is? Or is that adding to what's left over to make this year's amount?
Yeah, I think every year we put about $700,000, $750,000. Every year we budget it. So this year, that's the remaining funds in the contract, in the budget amount. So we are going to add that.
Thank you.
And I think we might, I think on item 6.10, would you go ahead and explain that again, Aaron, on the $700,000 for the event center funding?
At the study session last time, two weeks ago, we talked about this fund and where it was at. Overall, we had actuals for July through December and January through June. We had projections, which led us to having $3 million in revenue for the year, but $3.8 million in expenditures. Altogether, I'm showing that we're going to come in at a deficit of $697,000. So we need $700,000 to get us back in a positive net zero position for the year in the fund. There are excess funds in EMA. We've collected in specifically the water line during the year, over a million more than what we had budgeted. So there's funds from the available current budget without dipping into any reserves to fund this transfer over to bring it back to a balanced budget within this fund. The deficits come from really two, well, three things. One is the event center operations. It's about $436,000. The rest of it is because hotel tax came in lower than what we put in the budget by over $100,000. And then also there's additional capital items that were not included in the budget that we need to get done before the end of the year. So going forward, the event center is able to realign with the direction they've been given with having a lot more sporting events. So they need to get that upgrade to the video system that's in there. And this appropriation will allow us to go ahead and get that paperwork into work so we can bring that item back for approval to purchase that.
Additional questions on that, Commissioner? Okay, guess not. Any other items you want to discuss? Okay, I'll move on to item 3.1, discuss affordable housing opportunities. And Leroy, I think this is you.
This is the beginning. Well, I'm sure we'll have more discussions on this topic, but it is to provide some background on primarily affordable housing. We're talking about manufactured homes and modular homes. And then we've added a couple other topics to it. See if I remember how to advance. The topics on factory-built or prefabricated housing, which includes mobile homes, manufactured homes, and modular homes. We're going to talk about the definitions and distinguishing characteristics of those three different types of homes. Talk about the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission that regulates stick-built and modular homes. The manufactured home construction and safety standards, which is the HUD code, which is a national legislation that covers manufactured home. Talk a little bit about cost comparison. Talk about location restrictions on manufactured homes in Enid by our Code of Ordinance. And then some potential alternatives. And then at that point, I thought we would stop and answer questions on that part of the presentation. And then the second part is on accessory dwelling units, if we get to it. And the third part is talking about the Oklahoma Academy for State Goals and their 2023 priority recommendations on housing. The Oklahoma Academy, I refer to it similar to a think tank. It's a group in Oklahoma. Each year, they take up a different topic. In our ordinances, the term of mobile or manufactured home is in two locations. So it's defined twice in our ordinance. And in 11-1-7, it talks about the size and the width and manufactured on a permanent chassis, designed to be used as a dwelling with or without permanent foundation. That is a major distinction between a manufactured home and a modular home. It comes on a permanent chassis. We don't define modular home separate. It's rolled into this one. And in that definition, modular home is a manufactured structure usually utilized for residential purposes. It's transportable in one or more sections, and it lacks a chassis and is intended to be located upon a permanent foundation. The second definition doesn't contradict the first, but I just wanted to show that it is defined in two different locations in our ordinance. Some additional clarification on that definition. There's actually three categories of factory or prefabricated homes. One is the mobile home, two is manufactured homes, and three is modular. The mobile home definition, which still has quite a stigma to it, is talking about manufactured homes that were built prior to 1976, when the HUD code or the manufactured home construction and safety standards were adopted at the federal level. So they really upgraded manufactured homes when they come up with that standard. There's not too many, what you would still call today, mobile homes out, because that's almost 50 years ago, the standards changed. Manufactured homes meet the current manufactured home construction safety standards as amended, and it's referred to as a HUD code. And since 1976, they made some amendments to improve those codes over time. Again, with a permanent chassis and to be used as a dwelling unit with or without a permanent foundation. A modular home is lacking a chassis. It's to be located upon a permanent foundation and constructed to meet locally adopted International Residential Code, IRC. Currently, the city of Enid has adopted the 2015 edition of IRC. So modular homes and manufactured homes have two different standards of construction. They're very similar, but they are different. Manufactured homes are constructed in a factory based on the HUD code adopted at the federal level. We can't require manufactured home to meet the 2015 International Residential Code because the federal law is the supreme law. But modular homes have to meet the same International Residential Code as a stick-built home. And that's why a modular home can go anywhere that a stick-built home could go. Just a couple additional definitions I thought would be important in our discussion. Mobile home park in the definition in our ordinances of what a mobile home park is. And then a mobile home neighborhood or subdivision, and that's an area designated and zoned by the city, not in a mobile home park, where mobile homes are permitted and encouraged on separately in private-owned lots. So typically, in a mobile home park, there's one owner, there's multiple spaces, and people can rent those spaces to put their manufactured home. And again, our ordinance repeatedly uses the term mobile home. If we were going to update that, we would replace that with the term manufactured home. The mobile home neighborhood is where you can own individual lots and place a manufactured home on those lots. Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, by state statute, the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission adopts all the building codes statewide, and all municipalities have to follow that code. And I think they've adopted now the 2018 International Residential Code. And in their future, we will be updating. Right now, we've adopted 2015, and in their future, we'll be adopting the 2018 code. The 2015 edition that we've adopted is applicable to traditional stick-built homes, as I said, and modular homes. But it does not apply to manufactured homes. They are built based on the HUD code. The HUD code is a supremacy of federal standards. No state or political subdivision of a state shall have any authority either to establish or to continue in effect with respect to any manufactured home covered. So we can't change those rules at the local level or at the state level. The first HUD code became effective June 15th of 1976 in response to Hurricane Andrew in 1992. HUD responded by upgrading the structural and tie-down requirements in 1994 and again in 2000. And over time, insulation and the building envelope standards have been enhanced. So there's been some amendments since 1976 to enhance those codes. I did not try to list all the amendments that they've done over the years, but they have enhanced the code. Cost comparisons, this is a difficult thing to nail down because there's so many variables involved. The finishes, the outside siding, they vary from structure to structure. So saying that a modular house would cost this much per square foot, stick-built this, is a difficult number to tie down. Also, when you try to research this on the internet like I did, and you're not in the building trades, very quickly, those cost comparisons get dated with inflation. If you look at cost comparisons that are two years old, they're probably not relevant to today because of changes in cost. But typically, it's generally understood that a manufactured home is the least cost of the three options. Of course, depending on the amenities that you put in it. And then second would be modular, and then third, the highest, would be stick-built homes. And part of that is modular and manufactured homes because they are built in a factory setting. You have all the materials there. You don't have weather delays because you're building it onsite in a weather-controlled environment. It's a lot of the factor. In our ordinance, we restrict locations on manufactured homes and where they can go in our community. There's four areas they can go, but the two primary ones discussed tonight are mobile home parks R6. The purpose of the R6 zoning, the purpose and intent of this district is for the planned use development, maintenance of mobile homes and mobile home parks. And then R3, mobile home neighborhoods. This zone is intended to provide a district for the use of mobile homes on single-family lots. Permitted uses are one-family dwellings, one mobile home per lot. The use occupancy or location of travel trailers or camp trailers within mobile home neighborhoods is prohibited. So it doesn't, it's not set up for travel trailers. The map that was in the agenda pack, it probably has more clarity than this. When you take a GIS drawing and try to put it into a PowerPoint, it bleeds out. But what I'm trying to show with this slide, this is the primary areas of R3 residential mobile home neighborhood districts in our community. Enid encompasses roughly 74 square miles. You can see that the area that we have designated and zoned R3 residential, where you can have a lot and put your manufactured home on it, is somewhat limited when you look at how big our community is. I have tried to take each one of those areas and enlarge them. This will probably be more meaningful to the council members and residents than myself. Only been here roughly, I guess, three months now, today, since April. I don't know the community quite as well as you all, but on this slide, this is showing the areas of R3 residential. And the area number one on the drawing, whoops. Is that area right there. And that's the area right here that is bound by North Washington Street to the east, West Oxford Street to the north, West Willow Road to the south, and Van Buren on the west side. Area two is a smaller area. And then also in the R3 residential area, area three on the map was bound by primarily South Independence Avenue, South Leona Mitchell Boulevard, Steel Avenue. And then area four is bounded on the north by Chestnut Avenue, Randolph Avenue on the south, and 20 and 30th Street. Again, this is the area in Enid where you can have mobile home parks. And again, this is just a geograph that can kind of show you that the areas that you can have a mobile home park are also limited when you look at the size of our community. And then I took those areas and blew them up so that you could see the different areas. Again, you're all a lot more familiar with these areas than I am, being new to the community. Some potential alternatives that could be considered is to identify target areas where manufactured homes could provide infill housing in declining residential areas of arrested development with a history of little or no new construction. This approach would encourage conservation of natural resources and makes better use of existing infrastructure. So if you drive around our community, there are areas where there are a lot of vacant lots. And if you look at the status of the housing in some of those neighborhoods, it's clear that an investor or homeowner is probably not going to build a new $300,000 home on those lots. So we need to look at other alternatives if we're going to try to infill those lots and take advantage of the investment we already have with the utilities there and the roads. And so a couple options to consider is we could rezone part of the town to R3 mobile home neighborhoods or subdivisions or the R6, so we could rezone. Another one would be to create a manufactured home overlay district. Over a portion or all of the identified target areas that provide an opportunity for citing of manufactured homes that meet established appearance and dimension aesthetics to protect the property values, preserve the character and integrity of the communities and neighborhoods, to ensure architectural compatibility. So when you do an overlay and you put conditions on manufactured homes going into this overlay district, you're not changing the construction standards. The box itself, the manufactured home, those standards are again set by the HUD code. What you're trying to do is things that make it have the appearance more like the traditional homes, pitched roofs, a double wide, where a single wide doesn't look as much like a traditional home. Some communities I've seen, the front door has to face the street because that makes it look more like a traditional neighborhood than driving down the street and you see the back end of manufactured homes on the block rather than the front. So minimum width, 24 feet is an example. Each home must be attached to a continuous concrete or concrete block foundation with a crawl space, adequate access ventilation in accordance with current adopted code for single-family dwellings. Again, having a concrete block rather than a metal siding around skirting, this makes it more look similar to traditional homes. I will point out that the, in 2020, the state of Oklahoma adopted a statute, residential building design elements and regulations. This statute is a little difficult to read and interpret, but it limits the standards that you can set on a manufactured home if you put them in an overlay district. And so we'll have to do some more research on the standards that we can set. A third option is, of course, to adopt a PUD, Planned Unit Development. We would have to look at that, I looked at the PUD Planning Unit Development Regulations Arizona. or Zoning and Principal Uses. It says, "Mobile home dwellings are permitted uses only within PUDs which are located in whole or in part in an R3 district or an R6 district." So our current PUD regulations may provide some standards that we may have to look at if we want to use the PUD as an option rather than rezoning or doing the overlay district. Again, if we look at rezoning or an overlay area, I'm sure someone will not agree with that, and we'll probably run into what's commonly referred, "Not in my backyard" or "Nimba." So there will be some challenges, I'm sure. Not everybody's going to accept it because there is still a stigma on manufactured homes, even though the HUD standard's been around for 50 years and their construction's been approved. Everybody still thinks of the old mobile home as built in the 60s and 70s, and when you say manufactured home, they immediately have that vision. And so if we're going to do this, part of it will be an education process so the general public understands the building regulations for manufactured homes are very similar to the International Residential Code adopted for stick-built homes. There's not a significant difference. And number two, there can be some standards set on appearance and architectural features that will blend them into the neighborhood and make them look more and fit in better with traditional neighborhoods with stick-built homes. R4 residential is for duplex or two-family dwelling districts. This is a residential district to provide for slightly higher population density, but with basic restrictions similar to the R2 district. The principal land is for single-family and two-family dwellings. The areas in the community zoned R4 could be explored to determine if there are areas that would be suitable to utilize manufactured homes for infill development. And this isn't necessarily a proposal, but just for discussion, hypothetically, I took the area R4 zoned, again, you're all more familiar with the area than I am, but bound on this side by 16th Street and Randolph on the south and 30th on the west. And this area also abuts an area of significant R3 zoning already. So an area like this where there's infill lots available, they're probably not going to be attractive for somebody to build a $300,000 home on, might be an area to explore for an overlay district or extending the R3 zoning into that area and rezone, either one of those options. And if you rezone, this is our current code for the R3 residential permitted uses, 116C-3, one-family dwellings, so they could still have one-family dwellings, one mobile home. And uses by review, I just put this in here to remind everybody, if we looked at rezoning areas and expand the R3 districts to new areas, what the R3 zoning regulations were. And I won't read those to you since it's in your packet. On this slide, this is based on a model after Oklahoma City Ordinance 59-13350. This ordinance was adopted in 1998. So I mentioned to you that in 2020, this state adopted some statutes that limited the standards you could put on a manufactured home. And so we will have to look at, if we use this as our model, we'll have to make sure it's compliant with that state statute. And things have changed over time. In the old days, I copied out of a letter that was sent to a community in Oklahoma back in 1996 because there was question on their manufacturing home regulations. And in the HUD letter, it said, "A locality is free to adopt and enforce ordinance that regulate the appearance and dimensions of manufactured homes so long as the criteria for such ordinance do not have the effect of including manufactured homes based on the construction and safety standards to which they were built. Such regulations of aesthetics protects property values, preserve the character and integrity of communities and neighborhoods, and assures architectural compatibility with the balance of the neighborhood." Well, we went from that with the state statute adopted in 2020, and it's narrowed what we can do as far as the conditions we can put on the siding and architectural features of a manufactured home to blend in with the rest of the neighborhood.
Leroy, I'm not sure I mentioned this, the 2020 law, it doesn't just apply to manufactured homes. It applies to stick-built homes too. I don't know why they adopted it, but it is a limitation on municipalities trying to do decorative design things. Now, there's a whole set of exceptions and stuff. And of course, a lot of neighborhoods now have the covenants and stuff, but it does attempt to limit design features in the future for new homes or new stick-built or new manufactured homes, or for that matter, modular homes.
If you look at, for example, in their ordinance under item three, manufactured homes must meet the following conditions for approval. Minimum width, 24 feet. Exterior veneer material must be comparable with at least 50% of the existing homes on the block face unless the number of vacant lots exceeds the number of existing homes. The roof of each home must be a gable or hip type with at least a C, single roofing material. The roof of each home must meet a minimum of 3 to 12 slope. Each home must be attached to a continuous concrete or concrete block foundation. Those conditions, again, were not changing the construction standards of the manufactured home or what I called the box. They were changing the outside appearance to make them fit in with the balance of neighborhood so they're more compatible with the neighborhood they were going into. I would point out on the state statute at the end, there is a provision that still allows when someone develops a subdivision and they create a regulations or covenants for that subdivision, they still have the ability to put restrictions in the covenants that would be enforced by the homeowners association, not by the city. So each subdivision itself could have stricter regulations on appearance and standards for manufactured homes than what the city could adopt. So that's still available as developers develop new subdivisions. So I've talked about the limitations that we may face with the 2020 state statute, but there are still, even with the 2020 state statute, there are conditions that we could put on a manufactured home if you have an overlay district that can make them more compatible with the neighborhood they're going into. The 24-foot size, having a concrete foundation instead of metal skirting, those kinds of things, we're not limited by that statute. Some of the other things, like the type of roof, type of siding, we'll need to do some additional research to see what our abilities are in that arena. With that, that concludes my presentation on manufactured homes and modular homes. I'd be glad to answer questions, and I believe there may be others in the audience that may have comments if you want to afford them the opportunity to provide feedback or comments on the presentation.
I have a question for Leroy. Probably not the most schooled person on zoning, but I'm confused a little bit about an overlay versus zoning. Does the overlay on top of the zoning or under the zoning, and how does that all work?
An overlay district, if you have, like this example, R4, when you adopt the overlay district, you are setting variances in that overlay district. For example, you could have a manufactured home on a lot in that district if it met certain conditions.
So it's a variance for the zoning that is in place?
For lack of a better term, anything that's not varied or provided a variance in the overlay district would follow the same regulations that the zoning district, it was overlaid on. So if you did not put a variance in on the size of the front yard, has to be 50 feet. The lot has to be so many square feet. If you didn't provide a variance in the overlay part of it, then you go back to the underlying zoning that it sits on top of, and you follow those regulations because you've not exempted out of those regulations for that overlay.
I got it.
In the past, our overlays have predominantly been more restrictive rather than providing...
Less restriction.
More, yeah, like the ACUS limits the density.
That's why I got confused.
Yes.
ACUs is...
And we've got the downtown one that restricts some uses that would have at statehood been allowed, probably, you know, bingo parlors.
I may be wrong, but I was thinking that there may have been one overlay district for mixed-use development where they could have different types of uses in the same zone. That's what you see a lot of times is...
Yes, we don't have, I don't think that we have that. Usually that is developed with the PUD, but many cities now have that. And of course, actually, our downtown area is the classic mixed-use.
Yes. So for example, we haven't done it in Enid apparently, but you could have a overlay district for a mixed-use where you overlay it over a commercial district that only allows certain things. And the overlay, you could allow a mix of residential types. You could have single-family, duplexes, commercial, all together, and that would be covered by your planned unit development. So planned unit development can be used in a lot of different ways. There are communities that have used planned unit development. Say you've got a 40-acre tract, and if you look at density under the zoning ordinance, you could only get 50 houses in there. But there's a large drainage area that eats up part of that 40 acres. So you could do an overlay district where you let them have smaller lots so that they could still have the 50 houses and then use the drainage area for park-type improvements to serve that neighborhood. So there's a lot of creative things you can do with a planned unit development.
We have an example of that, I think, at Cleveland and Chestnut where we have multifamily housing. We have the commercial, the small Walmart. We have some small shops in there. We have some single-family homes built in there.
That would be a traditional planned unit development?
I think so. I think the purpose of this to prime the pump is to educate all of us on what we have as we look for how the city can help developers solve the affordable housing problem. I think our effort here is not to become a bank or to start a construction company, but this is tools the city has that you have at your disposal that Leroy's telling you about, and he's given you some options. I think potentially this is the start of the conversation. And so we really did plan on talking about this quite a bit today. So if you, I'm sure you'll have more questions for Leroy, and that would be good now, but it might be good, Mayor, if you want to call on David Ritchie or Marcy Mack or both to talk about it as well.
Yeah, and Leroy, before you sit down, and I think I know the answer to this, but we're not restricted to the size of an overlay, right? I know we're very short on housing, but if we wanted to take the example that you were using up there, very small area, and do an overlay and give that a try and see how that worked out with developers before we jumped out there on a fairly large project?
I guess an expression I use a lot is "too far, too fast." And so you're correct, we could be conservative and we could explore what area we think there is a lot of infill potential that probably will only be infilled if we're creative and allow manufactured homes in some of those infill lots because the economics of it, on what would be, an investor might put on that lot, we can identify whatever size area we want. We can start small, we can start bigger, we can do it in phases. We can say, you know, we're going to do this phase first. If it's successful, then we'll move to this phase and expand overlay into this area next. So you can be as creative as you want.
Okay, okay. Dr. Mack, I know you had some thoughts on this also. Did you want to speak? Or I didn't know if you and Mr. Ritchie wanted to talk together or just, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the housing piece in the conversation, what comes around housing as we look at any industrial development, which you guys are very invested in that as well. At the same time, we also need to look at what we're doing for housing to recruit individuals and provide that space. So in 2023, Enid Regional Development Alliance did complete a housing study that is posted on the website. It's great, 71 pages of exceptional reading if any of you would like to look at that. One of the pieces in there, it gives the overview of where we're at right now, but there's also some specific steps that outline what we need to be doing to meet the gap that we currently have so that five years from now, 10 years from now, we're not having the same conversation as we are today of how we move forward. One of those pieces in the study is specific to the inventory currently of our housing situation, what that looks like. There are some specific target areas that would work well with the outline of the overlay and what that looks like. The design in the study does outline it as some specific pilot areas that you could, just as you were mentioning, Mayor, that we could choose specific areas that we know there may be developers interested in trying that and what it looks like and stepping through that, setting it in stages. There are examples from the study. I have examples from three cities that have done overlays, and it is specific to manufactured housing, modular housing, and what they did specifically to target infill, which is a separate conversation from the manufacturing and modular. So I think there are some examples out there that would be very beneficial for us to look at, put some steps in place and lay out a plan so that we could bring that... so that we could bring that back if there was a desire for the commission to look at. And then phase that out. What's step one? What are those areas? How do we look at it? And then along that same line, and the target of that was specific to coding, code restrictions, and those particular things. So it is outlined in the study. And we can dive into that if there's interest in looking at what the steps were recommended in that group that came in and did it. But we do have a footprint that I think we can follow, various strategies out there that we can try. One size will not fit all. So where we have one overlay, that is not going to work across the board. But we do have some examples that we can look at that. And we are excited to be able to try and move that forward because we need to be moving the housing conversation forward, what that looks like, and providing some flexibility so that developers do see opportunity to bring their product here. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
I know, Dr. Mack, that one of the conversations, I think it was when I was talking to Mr. Ritchie also, that, and I guess I hadn't actually thought about it like this. I think we have over 90 vacant lots currently. And, you know, our product in the city of Enid is water, trash, and sewer. And that's 90 locations that, one, we could use the housing. And number two, we're gaining no revenue. We probably just mow those lots. Actually, it probably cost us dollars, I would think. So I just see a lot of opportunity. I think we're going to have to think outside the box. I don't think we can do what we've always done in the past. And, but I am very much in favor of maybe doing this on a small-scale pilot program because I don't want to jump out there and get something so large and we wish we would have done it a little differently. I think that any project like that could use some tweaks along the way. And I just think that we're going to have to, if we want to continue to grow, like I know you do and I do and everybody else up here, we don't have enough housing. I mean, it's literally in black and white. We pay money to be told what we already knew, actually. But that being said, I think there is a great opportunity out there. But I do think we're going to have to, we're going to have to do it differently. But I don't want to get so far out there. And I'll say this, I'm always concerned about making sure everything still fits all of our codes. And I appreciate, Leroy, what you were showing or trying to show, how it's not like it was 20 years ago. And I fully, I fully understand that. But at the same time, five years from now, if we allow this, five years from now, I don't want homes that people are afraid or can't live in because they were built so poorly. So I don't know. That's my thought on it. I don't have much past that. I'll let anybody else, any other commissioners that want to talk or ask questions, or I'll just keep going.
I got hung up on the veneer. Most of the homes in my ward are stick homes made with wood. A lot of that wood's deteriorated over the years. I got homes that are built in the '30s and the '20s on the east side. A lot of them just cover it up with vinyl, make it look pretty. A lot of these manufactured homes now are using cement board as their siding. Is that compatible with my vinyl siding and my wood structures? I think it looks better than most of them.
And those are the kind of things, as we get into this war, we can explore.
Leroy, go ahead and move back to the mic.
We can fine-tune it. And those are the things we can explore. And so the part that, if we're allowed to designate type of veneer or siding, we can adjust that to complement what's in the overlay district. Another thing, I'm not involved in our local CDBG program, but some communities, say if you've got a block and you've got six vacant lots you're going to try to infill with manufactured, but you have some owner-occupied structures, they're occupied by families that are low and moderate that qualify for home grants. You could target your home money to that block and assist those low and moderate to upgrade their houses on that block, put the manufactured in. And then you've upgraded an entire block in your community to look better than it does today.
Which will also help on the comps, right? For a bank then to come in and loan in those areas. I mean, that's a big, that's a big issue, isn't it? Whenever someone wants to go put a home in a certain area and there's not comparables for them to go down to the bank and.
It does have an impact on your estimated value for a loan.
Yes.
So we can tweak it to fit your needs.
And I understand that. What I'm saying, though, is I've had duplexes put in, and they got the brick front. They're some of the nicest houses in that particular neighborhood. Is this particular saying that's on here, the exterior, is that confining us to the fact that we can't go above and beyond what's already there?
You can specify that in the overlay. Like I mentioned, the, some of the examples that the cities have that I had an opportunity to look at, you can specify that. So one overlay, if you choose to do that in a specific area, it can be different than the overlay over here because that fits the facade. It fits the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And make sure, as Leroy stated, you know, not in my backyard, well, it needs to look like their backyard and what they expect in their neighborhood. We wouldn't want, in my opinion, we don't want to create anything that's lesser than. And so that's what you can do in the overlay as the commission. You can look at that and you can specify what you want that to be. And it doesn't have to be the same for each area.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This would be a, this would be a boost up in the neighborhood and then try to get the neighbors to coincide.
In the study, the revitalization piece, the study that was there, it outlined how we partner with an overlay. And then we know, hopefully, it will allow for some revitalization. And then how do we partner in those funds and other partnerships that were identified by the study to be able to make that happen for homeowners in that area? So they're, they put together a strategy to be able to address exactly what you're talking about.
The only caveat I would add is we'll need to make sure the conditions that we put on it comply with the 2020 state statute.
One more question, Leroy. How do we, so for that, one particular homeowner that wants to do all this themselves, right? And they take that project on, and it goes on for long periods of time and never actually complies because they're still working on that project. How do we make sure those projects have a start date and a complete date? Completion date?
A construction permit has a definite length to it. And if you don't complete a construction project within that length, then you can ask for an extension. But that extension could be denied. So their building permit could disappear.
Which means they would not be able to occupy that, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Scott G., is our standard six months or what? Do we have a standard? Okay. And then obviously, we give extensions on that. But that's how we control, trying to keep progress moving along.
And what we've done in most communities, if they get close to the end of the 180 days, as long as they continue to make substantial progress, we will give them an extension. If they're not making any progress, then we reevaluate.
There's certainly been times, especially during COVID, where supplies, just ordering garage doors and windows might take 120 days. So we've been.
I lived that, yeah.
And we've not talked about duplexes because that wasn't one of the things I was tasked for. But you could also look at opportunities to encourage more duplexes in the community as well.
And I'll just clarify, this is just the beginning of what we can do. So I think we're going to want to talk duplexes. In fact, I want to talk duplexes right now because, because of conversations we have like this, because of the ERDA housing study. Scott Morris spent with you, I think, an hour today with a couple, a developer guy. Would you just briefly talk about that? Because that's a great news story. We did nothing except talk about trying to change some things. People came here and said, hey, we're great and easy to work with, and they're going to build six to eight duplexes.
You're right. I had a few guys come and visit my office, and Scott Garnett and I, this is before Leroy was here. But we met with a developer and we actually pointed them towards some property that was already zoned for duplexes, R4. And he's currently got two of them that are going up. He owns another lot where he's planning on building a few more. And I believe he just bought a few more pieces of property over around the Spring Ridge area over west of the mall where he's building some new duplexes. And he told us when he came in, he said, I found out that there was a need in Enid because I read about it after your housing study was completed. So very interesting, very, very, I think they're doing good work.
And it happened my favorite way, the old-fashioned way. They just read something in the paper, decided they were going to come here and do something, did it. We've issued the permits, they said today. In fact, they weren't here, but we're going to get a testimonial because they said we were one of the easiest communities ever to work with. And we don't always hear that. And to hear that from somebody who just came in and did it, wow. So that's the benefit. So we're not just talking about manufactured homes. We're talking about duplexes. That housing study talks about the whole gamut. And so as we try to remember that we're helping with the problem, we're not really solving it. It's about the whole gamut of people that need housing at affordable prices. And to be frank, some aren't at a point where they can afford. Manufactured house might help them, but they might have to live in a duplex for a while. I think it says that in the study. They might have to live in a multifamily apartment.
And I think whatever we decide to move forward, a public awareness campaign will be essential so that some of the stereotypes that people have of different housing types, we can show examples of quality and do away with some of those stereotypes. So I think a public awareness program will go hand in hand with what we try to do. So they're more acceptable by homeowners and general public. Because I can tell you, by 40 years of city government, I've been through a lot of zoning hearings. And people will almost become irrational when they get up and they think they're protecting their investment in their home. And they'll say some things that curl their hair on the back of your neck sometimes. So I think a good public awareness campaign goes hand in hand with what we're trying to do.
I think so. What I heard you say earlier, too, is our code needs a little modernization anyway with or without overlays. I think I heard you say in R3 and R6.
Yes.
That's mobile home parks and neighborhoods. That we should either include manufactured or use manufactured as the term?
Manufactured homes should replace mobile homes.
Leroy, there's something I want to also bring light to, set some light on. We used to have the rental rehab program. When we go to DC next month, I'm going to make sure I ask about that to see where the funding is because I know that HUD has that type of funding. And I believe that that will help individuals that might not be able to qualify for loans at the banks. And they might not have a whole lot of money, but they have to put some sweat equity into it and a little bit of their money and, you know, match funding. So I think that that's going to really be able to help us take care of some of those situations to where we don't have to tear down houses and put them in a landfill. We save those structures.
Absolutely. And the state of Oklahoma created a housing opportunity fund that is managed by the Oklahoma Finance Authority. There is some grants out there. I've not had time to research that on what size grants, what you can use them for. But definitely, we'll be looking into that to see what state funds might be available as well.
Yeah, because my dad, he had actually hired two crews. And within three years, they were able to rehab 15 houses in three years. And it made a big difference. So I know it's available. We're just going to have to look into it. I'm going to make note of it.
Leroy, I like, I like the fact that you used the word substantial because we addressed the situation and we asked for substantial, I did, improvement on deal. And that was one of the houses that ended up into the landfill because the owner did not put any substantial work into it. But I like that turn that you used, substantial.
Thank you, sir.
You have some more presentation, but David Ritchie might want to say something. Okay?
I'm David Ritchie. Some of you I know, most of you I don't. Builder, developer, been in Enid now 25, 27 years, somewhere around that. For the last three years, I've been working with the State Home Builders Association to try and get housing in small communities. And you go into these smaller communities, I'm not talking about Enid. I'm talking about places like Covington, Garber, Ames, around this area. And they all want housing, but they want workforce housing. Workforce housing is basically defined as somebody that's earning an income between $70,000 and $90,000. Two things happened about two years ago. Interest rates went up, building materials went up. You cannot today, in the state of Oklahoma, build a sticks-and-bricks 1,500-square-foot house for much less than $225,000. Now, if you were a workforce individual at $90,000 and your wife's not working, or it is your wife's income, you can't afford it. You just can't make the payments. It just doesn't work. The math isn't there. We started looking at the state level at manufactured housing. And we started talking, first of all, we talked with OML and asked if they would do a generic overlay. And they've been basically putting us off for the last 18 months. And they have not done it because they don't want to. We would go out in communities and we would talk about, communities that needed housing for their teachers, and we'd talk about manufactured housing. The perception of manufactured housing is overall, across the entire state, one of almost complete negativity. And when Leroy was talking about having to overcome thoughts and emotions, that's very true. You know, I always like to say when I talk with people, you know, most people get their concept of God by the time they're six and it doesn't change. Well, it's the same thing with manufactured housing. They've got their concept of what a trailer house looks like when they were six, and it really hasn't changed in the last 50 years. It's a tough sell. It really is. I think I've probably made a dozen presentations to small communities. I've gotten two that have been willing to talk about participating. I'm not shilling here for the Manufactured Housing Institute. But here's the deal. If you go out and build a 1,500-sticks-and-bricks house in Enid with virtually no lot cost, you're going to be looking at between $225,000 and $250,000. You can take that same square footage and go down and buy you a Solitaire 11. I don't know if you all know Solitaires. That's the gold standard for manufactured housing. You can go buy a Solitaire that is 1,100 square feet and have it placed on your lot, okay? On, basically on those, they put down about 70 piers. But you can have it placed on your lot right now for $77,000. Now, that is such a difference that it is unbelievable. And so you can deliver what you need. You can deliver workforce housing. It's just you've got to have someplace to put it. And you've got to have someplace that you can work from to develop a desire. I want you all to visualize real quick. I had, I went to the county assessor's office and I said, look, I would like to know the availability of double lots because you've got to have two lots. You have to have 50 feet to make it work in Enid because Enid's got a regulation that it's got to be a 50-foot lot. I want to know every 50-foot lot that's available with nothing on it. And I want the parameters of that to be from 16th Street to 30th Street and from Chestnut to 412. And eliminate. And eliminate all of this stuff from the universities, eliminate the schools, eliminate the county-owned stuff because there's some of that in all of that. In that square area, there is 113 lots that are available that you could put these homes on. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to hit every one of them because there's a lot of people out there that aren't going to sell the lots. But it's someplace to start. And there's enough available lots together in that area that you could change that entire complex in, I don't know how long it's going to take, but I'm going to say in a couple of years. So, anyway, I'm really glad that the city is considering this. Uh, I think it's a great step forward and I think it could be very beneficial to the industrial development. Thank you all.
Mr. Ritchie, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On those manufactured homes, um, the stud walls, are they two-by-sixes?
If they are built to IRC specs, you can get, you can have a home, you can have any manufactured home. You can't demand it and, and there's certain other things that says that you can't regulate that. But you can have, go out and you can buy a manufactured house that's built to RE's, uh, IRC specs. And that's International Residency Code. Uh, it costs you about $12,000 more to do it.
Okay, so 77 and 12, so about $89,000 for, that's a really good deal.
Yeah, and a lot of your, uh, the solitaires are already built with two-by-six walls. In fact, little known about a solitaire home, I'm, I've, I've had to research all this stuff, but a solitaire home is delivered with an extra set of wheels under it because the house is so heavy. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bob, did you want to say a few words?
No.
I've got about 10 minutes.
I had the bottle closed. Uh, mine's a little bit, uh, a downer. Um, y'all know me and I've been in a lot of things in Oklahoma City and Tulsa. You're up in Sepulpa. And, uh, everybody likes Enid. But they don't, they won't be here. They won't come here because we've got blow, burnouts across Catty Corner from Longfellow. There are two burned-out houses that are not collapsed. And you can go all over the east side and find them. And you'll go and you've got to do like my tires have been nailed, but go down alleys in case and look and see what you've got. You'll have six dogs chained to the fence. They have all of this stuff that's going around and nothing has happened. And Enid has always been in the minds of other people. And I say that, other people. Other people with money and other people that do things and make things and do, and do that kind of stuff. But we have, our company have had three multi-huge, uh, deal on BRAC III. And because that's where I finally looked and saw what was the problem. You have a, a city that is making all this stuff go around and we want to plug any hole and, and I'm a real big pluger of, uh, stormwater detention, uh, because that one is hard to do. But, uh, I'll give you some examples. Randolph at, uh, Garland goes straight east towards Tulsa. And in that area, in that little spot that is in the center of it, with all of these crummy little hobbit buildings, and hardly any of them have been touched. And they're, they don't have utilities, they don't, some of them do. But this is just not okay. And, uh, I don't know, we can get in there and start filing lawsuits against people that don't have any money. But it's, it's going to have to be taken care of. So I'm just warning you that this is going to be a big flop if you don't get the, hold on the, here's Enid, here's what we want, we want to do this and get it done. But it's got, it's got to happen and it's got to happen real soon because, you know, funds are coming in. We have had a lot of visitations, uh, uh, the, uh, Momentum and all of these other places that are really trying to get it all ginned up. But when you go out there and you go out and you see that there was a collapsed two-story house, uh, two houses down from Longfellow. That's what we have over there. And I was kind of surprised, but, uh, Commissioner Norwood, uh, has been on a ruckus run to get stuff cleaned up. And it takes people to do it. You can't go have a company do it. You got to pull these branches out, which is really good. Thanks, city. I see it's getting better, but boy, it just, it's not going to work if we don't get things tightened up. Anyway...
Okay.
That's what I have to say.
All right. Thank you so much and, uh, Mr. Ritchie, thank you. I think this is a topic, uh, I'm, I'm glad we're bringing it up and we're going to try to, uh, put a lot more time in studying this. Uh, you know, we don't want to have paralysis by analysis. I'd like to come up with a, a pla- a plan pretty soon and see what we can do. So, that being said, if there's...
What, what is the path forward?
I think the path forward is that we are going to, to look at, um, first, we're talking about the things that, to educate ourselves and the governing body and the public. And then I think we're going to look at modernizing the code. One of the first things we need to do is change the terminology. At the same time, we have an effective campaign plan. Sounds like you need to look at an overlay. Leroy, what was your guidance to us? Don't run too far, too fast. That probably would be
Don't go too far.
a good idea, as they say. But we could figure out where we think that might work. We certainly want to have, listen to the people, have probably a lot of hearings on that.
I would like to present this to the next planning commission meeting so that we get their input and then hopefully with your guidance and guidance of the planning commission, we can look at maybe some more specific proposals so that we could actually get into the meat of it. Tonight was just to whet everybody's appetite and see if there's any interest in pursuing this. I've heard that there is, as long as we don't try to bite off too big a chew at a time. So I think the next step is present this to the next MAPC meeting so that they could actively be engaged as well.
So you're suggesting the, the MAPC meeting a couple of weeks from?
Correct.
Okay. Um, this will not be, this is not the whole solution too. There's, there's more pieces to this. If we have time in the regular meeting, I would like Leroy to talk about accessory dwelling units because that's something Oklahoma, I believe Norman's already taken action, Oklahoma City is looking at it.
Yes.
It is part of the solution because workforce housing is something we need, but we also need housing for your mother-in-law. We need housing for your brother that doesn't have a job. We need housing for your kid that just hasn't found his way yet. ADUs might be the way. Currently, we don't allow for that. So I think, and there's probably many other things that we need to consider. This isn't just a, hey, slap an overlay on it, manufactured deal and we're done. Um, this will be a long-term conversation, but it sounds like we're going to be talking about it in two weeks. Probably a similar proposition, but then we'll start backing it up with, uh, proposed draft ordinances. Carol will, uh, Carol will crank them out, just like she cranks out all the stuff. That's what I think, that and what Leroy said is the way ahead for us, I believe.
Well, I, I agree, it's been a long time coming. We just need to keep the momentum and make sure we get some, get to the finish line with some of it, so.
Now, we need to find the finish line too, so we'll know when we're there, but...
I, I know a gentleman, he's sitting out in the audience. Um, I'm surprised I hadn't heard anything from him. By the name of Michael Shuck. He has quite a bit of information and ideas and he has a lot of answers to what's going on. So hopefully sometime in the future, Mike, you could come up and visit with us and give us some information and, uh, your expertise. I've seen what you've done, I've seen your drawings, your architectural drawings. It will really make a difference. So if you would, please, um, share your talents. Thank you.
Anything else? That's very good, Leroy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I don't have, that's right.
Never mind. We are adjourned.